Yes.
Yeah. Okay, good morning. I will call the September eighteenth board meeting to order. You have the agenda in front of you.
I'll prove the agenda of this.
Second.
A motion is second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. Betty, if you would read the minutes of the September eleventh meeting.
Uh, September eleven, twenty twenty-three, Chairman Pro Tim Rasmussen called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors order at nine A M. Members present were Rasmussen and Helgabold with Cluse absent. Motion by Helgabold seconded by Rasmussen to approve the tentative agenda motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of September five, twenty twenty-three were read and approved. Approved claims for payment. Motion by Helgabold seconded by Rasmussen to receive the monthly revenue report from the Wright County Sheriff. Motion carries. Adam Clemens Wright County Engineer uh held discussion on bridge number two hundred on Buchanan Avenue in Belmont Township crossing the Boone River. This is a one hundred twenty-eight foot by fifteen point two foot steel pony truss with steel I beams built in nineteen twelve. It is also on the National Register of Historic Places. There will need to be a bid letting for this bridge because it is an asset to the county. In the agreement, it will need to be over a water feature and cannot have vehicle traffic going over the bridge. Motion by Rasmussen seconded by um.
Hold.
I know, but I got last word of that. My round, my hovel to approve the bid document agreement and October and October fifth at nine A M. For the letting date on Bridge number two hundred. Motion carries. Clemens gave an update on the secondary roads. There were five work orders completed last week. Blades are blading new gravel uh being hauled to routes and reclaiming shoulders on paved routes. Trucks continue to cold patch and haul backfill to bridge projects. Bridge number one forty-one B on two hundred tenth Street and Ida Avenue will be completed today. Crews will then move to Bridge one thirty-seven on one hundred ninetieth Street between Ida Avenue and Hancock Avenue. Uh, motion by Rasmussen seconded by Helgabold to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Are there any of these are correct? Hearing none, they'll stand approved as uh red. Um, I think there was five signatures total for the claims.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, uh, open forum for public input.
The.
Yes.
So September eleventh, they pulled all previous COVID vaccine off. So there'll be the new um COVID um with X that the uh with XMV. That we do not have yet in order, so.
When they sold the old the.
We are not authorized using.
Okay, you throw it away or?
Yeah, just dispose of it.
Alright.
Yeah, they it was just uh was said it's bound dropped it.
True.
That ones removed and.
So all the previous ones are gone there?
Yep.
Is it one manufacturer now or?
No, they're still in the Moderna um.
I reserve.
Okay, yeah, and then like I said, I ordered it, haven't got it yet. There's a, there is a bridge still. Um, till like December of twenty twenty-four, so if there's an uninsured or underinsured, we can still give that vaccine. So that's a separate ordering that I, a supply that I get.
Any anticipated time when we'll get it and and who is it for?
Um, it it is for anybody.
Okay.
Um, I suspect in the next week or two, I think the supply is probably a little short. So what I ordered for the bridge, um, for the uninsured and underinsured, I got ten doses. As well. So I'm still waiting through my VaxCare. That's the company that I, right now that I use for for vaccine. Uh, they manage that, so. I've ordered at least a hundred doses.
And will this be a one-shot thing or is it a two-shot deal?
Should be a one-shot.
Done.
Still should get flu shots there and then that R S V vaccination is available for adults over sixty-five. Visit with your provider to see if that's something that would be beneficial.
Good.
So we just worry that we're we'll run into a trifecta of COVID, R S V and um flu. Uh, the the biggest concern through the whole whole COVID um event was pushing those healthcare systems, the E Rs, the beds. If you remember, so many hospitalized during COVID that people were shipped all over and they spent hours finding a bed for people. So that's the biggest thing is to keep the push off of that. Healthcare system also and the ER business, so.
So if I understand correctly, uh, there's this bridge vaccine, but that's not for.
It's the same vaccine, but that is for uninsured and underinsured. Underinsured, so it's still available for someone who didn't have the resources or feel like they have the resources to get the vaccine.
The original vaccines.
Um, no, it's it's the new.
The new one, okay.
Yeah, and then now otherwise the rest of it is on the new, the commercial.
So are we gonna be charging for the new ones then?
Yes.
Okay, so no more free shots unless you're.
No longer can I just give it? Remember in the past, we COVID vaccine came, we got it through federal down to the state. We could have charged it administration fee, but we did not have public health. Um, so now we don't have a choice because it's commercialized, so. Uh, we will have to do insurance. If they do not have insurance, then we use the bridge.
Gotcha.
Or is underinsured or the insurance may not do it.
And what's the cost? What's the cash paid for?
Um, cash, they have not given me those numbers yet either.
Okay.
Back here, we'll have to pop that out to me and show me, show me how much um that we have to pay as an agency.
Alright, thank you. So we pay as the shots are given or you pay for the full amount you received?
Um, no, I, cause I use VaxCare. So it's actually their vaccine. It's actually a really slim. So I get paid, it's their vaccine, we get paid administration. So we're held harmless to outdated vaccine. We're held harmless to the supply that we have. Uh, because before, if you had it, you didn't use it, you bought it, you lost money. This just flows through, so. Uh, I don't get any charge. They get it. Um, we get uh, we just get paid administration fee.
Okay.
Alright, so oops, excuse me.
Uh, just wanna let everyone know that. So every two years, um, we have a commercial appraiser through the state that come for equalization and it's a random selection of about a dozen different commercial properties. Um, she notified me that she will be in town this week, possibly next week too. Um, she has, she will be in a state car two zero six seven and her name is Lisa Schumacher. So it's just a random selection of about a dozen commercial properties. Um, she does the same thing we would do only through the state level, so.
And throughout the whole county?
Does she notifies the owners ahead of time or, you know, you just go up and knock on the door and say, this is who I am and this is what I'm doing?
Yeah, and usually she gets in a little easier being from the state. So she has her state car and her license and everything. They do it. They do it in every county that doesn't have that counties that don't have enough commercial sales every year, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, item number six, full canvas of votes for the special election held on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Looks for the EMS levy.
Well, we went over sixty percent.
Yeah, we went over to town. So, um, the election was September twelfth and um it was a countywide election. We had all our polling places open. And um, it was paper ballots hand count. Um, just because trying to keep the cost low, it was a yes, no completely. Um, so you have the results in front of you. There was um in Belmont, two hundred forty-nine people came to the polls to vote. In Clarion, one hundred and eighty. Dow's had thirty people come to vote. Eagle Grove had one hundred twenty-five people come and vote. Goldfield Precinct had sixty people and we had forty people absentee vote. With a total of six hundred and eighty-four votes for this election, of which six hundred and twenty-nine were yes. Fifty-five were no votes, making that ninety-two percent passing, yes.
Ever had one that high before?
Nope.
That'd be good for a single year.
So, and it was pretty decent numbers. Um, I would like to see more, but um, the very first time we did, I think we were at eight hundred and fifty-five total people. Um, but still a pretty decent turnout. Um, so.
Well, now, since we've done this, it does not, or it does still sunset in fifteen years?
Correct, yes.
Alright. Good.
Um, tally books. Here's this.
We have to sign these, Ben.
Yeah, just kinda look through them and make sure they're filled out. Um, the second to the last page has the tallies um of. So like that one is must be, that must be Belmont's. So two hundred thirty-five and fourteen, okay.
The sign in front here. You gotta fill in.
Oh, it's a seventeen teams. Yeah, that needs to be filled in. That's Clarion. Thank you. Clarion was one seventy-one, one seventy-one and nine.
And a year.
Oh. What do you need there, dear?
Uh, this. Confused by what this is because this doesn't have.
A total of forty people. There was forty-two people that requested. Two people did not send their ballots in, so there was a total of forty.
Okay.
And so that was a total of forty, forty votes passed.
But.
But this is not the full complete list of everybody who.
That was what was confusing. Okay, and do I sign anywhere?
You can just sign. And now we're switching gears and getting ready for the city school election. On the twenty-second is when the, all the paperwork has to be turned in to me, so. Just September.
This Friday.
The twenty-first has to be to the city council and the city and the schools. And then on the twenty-second by noon, they have to file all the paperwork with me here. So.
They do it twice once.
City, the cities get their paperwork, the schools get theirs. And so then on on Monday or on Friday, the twenty-second by noon, everybody comes and brings them to me.
Gotcha.
So. There's uh three signatures.
Getting Simon to yeah.
Recent. Yeah, this one.
From the center.
But this one, this one, and this one.
Maybe they don't know, but I know Grog Beer Volts is gone.
Right, I don't still love that one. What one was she got?
Three weeks.
You don't notice here or she?
Oh, hell no. Yeah, I am for three days, for the last three days.
So really?
If I don't screw up, they're parting it.
Betty, this one's supposed to be. Have these numbers up here.
Um, that one. It's no, it's mine, no.
Bubbly baby boy Thursday.
Congratulations. Name?
Uh, Knox Creed.
Knox Creed.
Weight seven point thirteen ounces.
Good size.
Looks just like me. Really, all that come from?
Naked, naked and bald.
Yeah. Audio, I have fun down there.
Okay, anything else on that?
Nope, that'll be it.
Need to mostly approve that?
Yes, please.
Don't move.
Second.
I would most in a second to approve the canvas of votes for the special EMS election held on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carry. Item number seven, crisis intervention services request to use the courthouse parking lot on October twenty-eighth from nine thirty uh A M. To eleven thirty A M. For trunk or treat Halloween activity. October twenty-eighth is a Saturday.
Motion to approve.
Yep. Second, coordinate with that Andy then, pardon me, they'll coordinate with Andy?
Yeah, okay. Uh, I have a motion and a second to approve uh the use by the crisis intervention services for trunk or treat Halloween activity to be held in the courthouse parking lot on October twenty-eighth from nine thirty to eleven thirty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carry. Uh, item number eight, review and act on ditch frame quote Joey Harrow for that business park uh drainage ditch. Um, I had a conversation, I went out and looked at it and had a conversation with uh our conservation director and he drove over and looked at it and they're actually taking care of the issue today. I told them to um keep track of their time and uh we will reimburse the conservation department uh for that. Um. So, okay, I would recommend that we uh not act on it, not act on.
No, it's just a good thing to get ahead of it because it's not that bad, but it will be if we don't.
Right. No, we do it internally inside.
So I would make a motion to uh not um employ Joey Harrow uh for the Aggris Park Drainage uh Ditch.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carry.
Aye.
Uh, item number nine, Adam Clemens Wright County Engineer Secondary Roads Update.
Okay. Uh, blades were outblading the new gravel they were just getting from Wright Materials. Um, reclaiming some uh shoulders on the pavement. That's all done. Um, trucks were hauling the rest of year three gravel and three eights minus to the bridge project. Um, but uh to for the backfill um on Bridge one forty-one B. Uh, they also started following the subbase, the clean subbase material to one thirty-seven. Um, thirty-seven work orders are completed. I wanted to bring your attention to the permits twenty-nine. Um, this was entrance closeout, so we had not heard from the applicant. So at some point, we just had to go back out and see if they were done because they wouldn't call us back and tell us. So we're trying to make a um kind of a new maybe procedure internally uh with our work order system to maybe send us an email of what ones are still out there so we can get it on top of this quicker. Um. Year three uh scheduled gravel is completed out of Wright Materials. Uh, so that went quickly. Uh, Bridge fifty-three. Um, the, they are forming and pouring and it was still up in the air until this morning. Uh, they're gonna pour today, actually. So I was very surprised that they got it all done. Um, so they are ready to pour this week. Um, I thought they would have been pushed back a little bit. They said forming pouring last week, but they were ready. Um, one forty-one B, uh, they completed, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Bridge fifty-three, anticipate then, will it take a week or?
Uh, depending on if, I don't know, I hadn't did get a chance to talk to Jeremy this morning if they were gonna use the maturity method. Uh, if they use the maturity method, it can be thirty-six hours to open. Um, I think the Jeremy said something about painting at the end of this week, so it could be open by the end of this week. But depending on maturity method versus uh breaking beams.
And uh, no other work to be done, guardrails or anything?
There will be seeding uh after that fact, but no progress.
It will be.
You won't even know.
Open for use.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Um, one forty-one B is uh open for traffic. Uh, they backfilled that and completed it. One thirty-seven, they uh knocked down the bridge and hauled clean rock and they were also while the bridge was going down, they were putting some of the sections together to kinda piece mill it and templated into uh the the hole. So um, signs they, the week prior and last week, they did complete their night drive for retroreflectivity. Uh, so the guys went out on Thursday night. They got last week, they finished um four townships and then the week prior, they finished four townships. So they were out um driving and using our application that we use through Service Bureau to complete that, so.
And we're, uh, will they finish crack soon on R thirty-eight today or?
Um, they got rained out last week, um, so they only went so far, but I I hope if they have a good week, they should be done this week with everything else. They're gonna be uh moving from R thirty-eight to the Lake Blacktop. Um, R forty-five and then they're gonna do R thirty-eight north of the Lake Blacktop East, uh, the asphalt portion, just deep cracks on the um, the Lake Blacktop or the R thirty-eight north. So I'm gonna show you how to get one. So they're right here currently.
You know.
They're gonna move to here and fill in any of those that are, um, we filled those up. We just wanna refill them and then they're gonna move up to here.
Okay.
Right there. So just deep cracks on that one.
Okay.
Lost out on that and then we'll be looking at.
You think this week they would finish all of that? Good, okay.
If they can get some good weeks or good days.
Okay.
No rain, so. Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, item number ten, consider going into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one point five. One J, discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the governmental, what the governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property. I would make a motion that would go into a closed session in accordance with uh Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one point five, one Juliet.
Yeah, second.
I have a motion and a second to go into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one point five, one Juliet. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. We'll be going into closed session. Okay, we are back in open session. Uh, there was no action taken in a closed session. Uh.
I got a question on the.
Go ahead.
Agribusiness Park.
Good.
Uh. What, what's your aspect? I guess people that are doing it now wondering what's going on because they got their notice.
Good.
Um, are we gonna put it up for bid then? Is that?
I I'd like to keep them on because they've done a nice show.
I've got no.
And they've got a lot of investment in it as well, but we need to get a cash grant out, but I do agree. I would like to.
So the, I think the information that we had, the average.
That's two fifty-two an acre.
Thirty-two.
Okay, this is the Iowa State twenty twenty-three cash rental rate survey. And for alfalfa and hay in the North Central District, uh, the average cash rent price is two hundred and thirty-two dollars. So, uh, is, is there any legal requirements for us to put it up for bid? Or can we offer it back to our tenant if they're willing to pay this and and that we would? Uh, I'd like to see it done for a term, whether that's three-year term and it follows this average. So in twenty twenty-four, we would get two hundred and thirty-two dollars uh per tillable acre in twenty twenty-four, whatever this adjusts, because this adjusts every year it's published. And it would follow this.
Right, well, is it the only thing now, if I was the, if I was the farmer, I could come back and say, I don't like that adjustment. You have to give the person out because all of a sudden they're relying on a three-year program, but they don't know what that dollar amount could be higher or lower.
Yeah, I mean, a standard lease, it can be terminated either by the tenant or by the landlord, provided that notification is given by August fifteenth.
Yep.
Even if you do a three-year lease?
Even if you do a three-year lease. That's my understanding.
I just don't know. I mean, I don't mind going down that road and offering it to him because he's done a good job at that rate, but but i- the procedure wise, can we do that?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
Can't go more than three years.
Yeah.
And I don't know if, can we just decide to?
How long is alfalfa usually good?
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
So three years.
We're on year three, so three years would be about.
Almost the life expectancy of it.
Yeah.
And be fair to him.
Right.
And then you would be out because you're gonna have to put it to corn or beans or something.
Yeah.
To to establish it, yeah. It's toxic.
You wanna find out if we can, can we do, I don't know if if we've terminated him and we just agreed to go with him without anybody else or or not? I I don't know.
Yeah, I'll say we need to know.
Yeah.
If we have to put it off for better.
I can check, I can check into that and report back next week.
Okay, that sounds good.
And I'll check with Eric also and make sure that uh if in fact that is the case, uh, how it would be written.
To tie it with that.
To tie it to this. Um, so that the tenant has an option if he wants to terminate the lease, he could do it.
Fair enough.
Are you gonna be more expli- you called it a maintenance agreement. Are you going to be more explicit in your maintenance?
I think we should maybe be specific on, is it right now mowing a highway seventeen dish and the ditch on the SWP, is that?
It's not specific at all. It's the only thing it does say is highway seventeen, but mowing any other areas, we're paying or I don't know, secondary roads build us yet.
I don't think we are because it's right away.
Right away.
Oh, I was thinking about.
I know, the agribusiness park, I mean, the the well, well area, I mean, it's small, but you're there, it's kind of a turnaround area for you.
There you go.
But anyway, it um
very.
It just, there just needs to be some spraying done to.
You're gonna have a tenant that does the alfalfa on that. You're not gonna have someone that's gonna manage that as as well because he's not, he doesn't have the equipment. Cutting the grass versus bringing a lawnmower there. I don't want, I I I have no problem with the tenant does the highway seventeen and and the other highway. But when it comes into our easement there, I I'm I'm happy with secondary roads.
I I I think that if we wanted to put together a plan of where we would like to not have any um let's just say like around the wellhouse instead of allowing some maybe some of that stuff to grow up, maybe we put some sterile down or some sort of engineering fabric down to prevent the weeds from coming out.
Or somebody spray it. Just somebody keep the frickin' weeds down.
Well, I'm thinking to prevent the weeds.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise. Right.
So like a Pramitol or.
Like a substation is, there's no weeds in a substation.
Right, no, they spray it every spring with, well, stare, I wanna like stare. They still spray there's every spring if you wanna go there.
The issue is, is there's a well there.
Right.
Where typically you don't have a well on a substation.
Correct. That would be a question for.
But it can still be made cane.
Right, I just, I just don't think putting the farmer in charge of maintaining that is gonna be a good idea.
No, no.
Okay, then I've been doing it wrong because how many acreages ever, because we find the land, we're mowing acreage.
That's part, that's a lot of farmers do that.
We mow that, we mow. I was, we're doing it wrong. If he's next to saying we shouldn't have, shouldn't tie it together, he's saying.
Well, I think it's, it's a road, it's, it's, it's a clay avenue, it's a road. You got the easement there, we got our stuff. I just.
Forget about the Clay Avenue. We'll, certain roads will mow that. It's the the road back to the wellhouse and anything that's off of public road right away. It's the the road back to the wellhouse and anything that's off of public road right away, think about that. Is that something that you want the farmer to take care of?
I guess it's seen on a map as it looks like. Yeah, yeah.
Well, and that's the other thing, we need to do some mowing, I mean, we need some sand actual, in a year where there's some rain.
One area I've seeded for N S is, that's county that I seeded, and then they came in toward all the hell again. And now it's a disaster again, and it's rough, we even for them to mow.
Right.
It it just.
We would need some serious, I mean, if you wanna just put grass like, like lawn grass there, it it it, that's what it needs.
Oh, yeah, it's a mess.
Grass we can put there that doesn't require the amount of mowing a normal grass needs.
Yes, we have.
Can you do it right before the snow falls and then will it be later and then have some moisture come spring?
Dirt, yeah, we need a bunch of dirt to level it up, get some of them manholes and the uh shot offs. Get that raised up so it can move right over everything, right now, there is so much shit that weed eat around. That should be straightened out and it hasn't been.
So do we have extra dirt, we start bringing dirt in there then, so we can do that? That wouldn't be a bad way, if they're moving dirt somewhere, they can just dump it off there and we, that'll be just a project we.
But if they're gonna put good dirt there, is they gonna level it off and get it straightened up so it's a nice, easy to mow? No. Right away. That's a kicker.
No, I'm just looking at getting dirt there, maybe we have dirt.
Oh, yeah. It ain't gonna take much moving around and fixing the way it should be, but you gotta have the equipment to do it to it.
Wrong, well, the other idea.
I've got money. I want it done, it's driving me batshit crazy, you guys.
So let's do a.
Yeah, I know, but the 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 weeds, the mowing.
I will take a look at right out, see, see what needs to be done.
We could do a joint effort where we clean a ditch and then that's where we haul it, I know that there's some road, roads down there that. Could use a ditch cleaning, it's that you're gonna get ditch dirt.
And ditch dirt isn't bad.
No.
It's the first part of the ditch dirt that sucks, yeah, because it's soft, yes.
Okay.
Uh, so you're gonna look into.
Lease.
Lease, to see if we can.
Just offer it back to the tent, current tenant. And uh and if we can base the lease on the ISU uh cash rental rate survey.
And will this be on the agenda for next Monday then?
I'm hoping so.
So I can tell people that are.
At least we should be able to have, have direction of what we can do.
Yeah, please talk to the P, I can tell people that have talked to me, it'll be on the agenda for next week.
We should be able to decide if we can do it or we have to go the other way.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, yeah. Uh, anything else?
I meetings, I've got uh public health tomorrow at seven A M and I've got landfill at Wednesday.
Good, any progress on the public health building, on the architecture stuff?
Should've came back.
She's talked to me, come back harder than she wanted, she's going back to the table with them.
Okay. Yeah, Rick was on that committee.
Yes, that's all I know, and I'll talk to her this week, say, how are you coming on it again?
Okay.
Cause that needs to be done.
That money's gotta be done by.
Forty fourth, doesn't it, or twenty sixth?
Twenty twenty six, I think is when we have to have the funds used by.
Or dedicated by twenty six and used later.
Dedicated by twenty four and used by twenty six.
Yeah, that's what it is, I knew it, twenty four was somewhere.
And that's really good, when you're still on the right part of that.
Correct.
We're we're waiting for statement on that.
For what?
I think we have it in this year, but if you don't use it, then we'll just.
Yeah, roll.
We'll use it, those funds are all spoken for, or not?
Yes, those dollars are, the six hundred and some thousand dollars is dedicated over there right now.
And so all the ones are.
The re- the remaining, yes, yes.
Have we heard anything from UseWings?
Yes, they're moving forward. With their estimates, they've got estimates on a few things right now, they're moving forward, so that'll be done. Yeah, there's been.
Is there a possibility that some of those funds won't be utilized?
I doubt it, I think uh it they'll, they'll, they'll use it all over.
Our motion to adjourn, second.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.